Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Longview, we'd like to welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Meeting. We appreciate the people in the audience and appreciate you giving your time to attend the meeting today. At this time, we're going to ask for the invocation to be given by Heath Hamerlin, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
Join me in bowing your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today. We thank you for the cooler weather and the fall season, dear God, and we just pray that you help guide our hand on the decisions that we make here tonight and that we make decisions for the best interest of the city and the people of Longview. Dear God, we just thank you for the opportunity to be able to meet in person. We ask that you just help us have a good meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Could join me with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting in September. Have the commissioners had time to look over them? Do any of you have any questions, any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second from Patrick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion does pass. The minutes are approved. We've now reached the citizen comment portion of the meeting, and this is, if you have any, I have a hard time explaining this, so bear with me. This is not the regular agenda, but if you have public comment, anything that you need to talk about, and you fill out one of these cards, this is the time to come and speak on an item. But again, this is not an item on the agenda, and is there anyone in the audience that just wants to have public comment? I see none, so we'll move to the regular agenda. The purpose is to hear all the pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the application before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commissioner also, commission also considers plat changes for new additions. The procedure for the public hearing tonight will be as follows. The public hearing will be open. Testimony will be heard in the following order. You'll have the staff, the applicant, the general public, and then those in support and in opposition will have the opportunity to speak. If you are part of a large group, we ask that you please select a spokesman so that we don't hear the same thing over and over, and also please limit it to five minutes at the most. I mean, we're not going to hold you definitely at that time, but approximately five minutes, if you will. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and further discussion will take place if it's needed. If not, we'll close it, have a motion, and vote on it. The zoning requests of the planning and zoning then go to the City Council, which will be November the 10th. They hear our recommendations, and then at the City Council meeting, they will make a determination whether they accept the zoning changes. We're now on item A of the agenda, and this is to consider the application of P-22-12, the Mission Creek Phase Number Five filed by Mission Creek Development Corporation, LLC, to plat approximately 9.697 acres of abstract 360A Jordan survey into 39 residential lots located south of Page Road along Mesa Drive. Angela will give a staff presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Noon. So as you had stated, the applicant is requesting to plat approximately nine acres into 39 single-family residential lots. This is another phase of the current subdivision that's already out there called Mission Creek. It's Phase Five. Staff does recommend approval of the request with the following requirements: that the applicant provides a letter of credit for the infrastructure and an estimate. Once all those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Angela?
What is the zoning for that?
That area is in a planned development for a single family.
What's the minimum required square footage?
For homes?
Yeah.
I can't remember off the top of my head. Hold on just one moment. I believe, I want to say, I think it's 1,500.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll not have a public hearing. This normally would be on a consent agenda, but since there are some stipulations, the motion does need to include the stipulations made by the Planning and Zoning Department. So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do they need to state the motion with the?
Yes, they do need to state the motion with the condition.
With the conditional approval.
Yeah, conditional approval.
Okay, we have the motion made with the stipulations.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes. Moving on to regular agenda item number B, Consider Application RP-2208 Liberty Baptist Church Edition filed by Liberty Baptist Church to replat approximately 7.039 acres of Lot Two, Block One into three lots located at 1,500 West Loop 281. Angela?
Thank you. So the applicant is requesting to replat approximately seven lots into three commercial lots. The applicant has not installed the required infrastructure or provided the estimate with the required security. So staff does make a recommendation for a conditional approval with the following requirement: that an estimate and security for the infrastructure be provided or they install the infrastructure. Once all those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer your questions at that time.
Angela, we don't have a public hearing on this, but I do have a speaker card.
I believe the speaker card is for the applicant.
Okay. The applicant would like to address this?
You bet. Good evening. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for consideration of the replat of the property. As far as the estimate, did you receive the estimate from our office earlier today?
We have not.
You have not? Can I, may I approach and provide it to you?
You can, yes.
Okay. So the, the first estimate is for the infrastructure, for the water, sewer, you know, the main utility extensions at the front of the property. The second estimate is for the sidewalk addition. So I don't know if that, I guess my question would be, if it's a conditional plat approval, what would our next step be, or could we still be approved at City Council on the 10th?
So this doesn't go to City Council. It just goes, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, once they make a recommendation to approve with the conditions, as long as the conditions are met, we would file the plat.
Yeah, it'd be kick it basically to administrative approval.
Okay.
Once you meet those conditions, then we'll sign off on it.
Okay. So would, would the plat be recorded in the month of November, or like, what's the timeframe then to be recorded? Because the infrastructure wouldn't be put in. We've, you know, we've provided the estimate, and we'll provide a surety for the work.
Once we get the surety, then we can file the plat, same day or next day.
Okay, perfect. We can do that. Is there any other questions of us as the applicant? Be happy to answer them.
Okay, agenda item B will be just like a agenda item A. It does not, it's not part of the public hearing, but somebody can make a motion with the same stipulation unless you have a question.
Since it's, since it's presented, do we take that as a verbal from you guys that it's presented and it's, that part's met?
The whole thing has not been met. We don't have the security, and so the condition still applies. I mean, we have the estimate, but as long as he gives us the, that security, if he gives it to us tomorrow, we'll be, we'll file it the next day. So, yes, so staff does still make the same recommendation that, you know, the condition that he provide the security, and as long as those conditions are met, it'll be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions as stipulated.
Have a motion to approve with the stipulation so presented. Second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes as stated. Regular agenda item number C, a public hearing will be held to consider application S-2209 filed by Roderick Wallman requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in a general retail zoning district for Lot 1A, New City Block 292, Longview Johnson Acres located at 1515 South Marbury Avenue here in Longview. Angela?
Thank you. So the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district, or in their case, it is a restaurant with a gas station with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for drive-through windows within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Marbury is classified as a minor arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have a question at this point? Okay, is the applicant present? I have a speaker card, I believe. If you'd like to come forward and make your presentation, please.
Hi, my name is Nick. Thank you for calling here.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a gas station. We tried to add, there's a two-car mechanic shop in the back. We never used it, so we want to turn into a kitchen and add a drive-through in there because in the past, when we had COVID, a lot of restaurants, they're successful because of their drive-through, so we want to add drive-through so we don't get any, anything in the future.
Any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak and request, in support of this request? I see none. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? I see none. Any other questions? Comments? Commissioners? None? If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. I'll now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Angela, did you, did you get it all?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving to regular agenda item number D, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-22-21 filed by Aaron?
Arun Shrinivasan.
Okay. Requesting a rezone from Planned Development PD-15 to Town Home TH zoning District for approximately .300 acres of abstract 258. The rains survey tract 2403 and 2501, Section 7, situated west of Patio Street, north of Greenleaf. Angela?
Okay, thank you. So as you all may remember, the applicant did come before the Planning and Zoning Commission maybe a couple of months ago to rezone the west portion of this property or the west part of this property, which is already now zoned townhomes. So he currently has under contract to purchase the sliver of property between him and the homes that face along Patio Street, and he has come back to request the, a rezone to Town Home from PD-15. As stated, you know, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any questions of Angela?
If I recall, last time, I may be wrong, wasn't there something said about the drainage?
I think some of their neighbors were concerned about the drainage.
Didn't they come in and say something about that?
Yes.
Of that?
It was to the west, and I believe some of the neighbors to the north, yeah.
Northwest, okay. So this is to do an extension for backyards?
Yeah, so if you look, I'll come back to this plan. Essentially, the plan is a little the same. If you look on that arrow, that's where, that's where this sliver of property is.
So the buffer's going to be there between the existing housing and the new housing that's going in?
So they just have a larger backyard.
Okay.
Is the applicant present? Would you come forward, please, and state your name? See if they have any questions of you, please. Aaron, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
That's all right, sir. Good evening, commissioners, Angela, Michael, the staff. Thank you for your time. Yes, like Angela mentioned, this little sliver of land is adjacent to those patio homes that was owned by Oak Forest Montessori School, and the owners approached us, part of that previous zoning request we had, since they don't have any use to it, and it kind of makes more sense for us to absorb it into the development, clean it up, and just kind of make it more safer for those neighbors back there.
Okay, any of the commissioners have any questions of Aaron?
Is there going to be, on that sliver of land, is there going to be a tree buffer, I guess, between the townhomes and then, and then the neighborhood?
That was one of the biggest concerns they have. Not necessarily a tree buffer, but there are a bunch of dead trees in there, and it, which is a hazard right now for those homes back there. So the plan would be, or the idea is to clean it up and make it more safer for them.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium. I see no one. Anyone like to speak in opposition? I see one. No one. Any other questions, commissioners? If there's none, no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number E, a public hearing will be held to consider application seven, I mean Z-22-22 filed by BTO Properties requesting a rezone from Agricultural A to Single Family Four zoning district for a portion of lots one through 10, orim addition, situated on the southwest corner of Yarborough Road and Harley Ridge Road. Angela?
Thank you. Kind of like this case before, you have seen this request as well before. The applicant did rezone this property in 2020 to Single Family Four. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with City Council, approved their request. At that time, we didn't have an accurate survey that provided, that was provided with the rezone request, and so there was an assumed property boundary when we rezoned this property. But through the subdivision process, or we call plating process, it was discovered that some of the areas within the platted subdivision still retained that agricultural zoning designation. So this request is for the remainder of this subdivision to be zoned, rezoned SF4 so that it is consistent with the rest of the lots. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Any, any questions for Angela?
They've already started construction on that, haven't they?
Yes, on some of the lots. Yes, they have.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward, please? State your name.
How you doing this evening? I'm Brad Norm, so kind of like Ms. Angela already said, we rezoned this back in 2020. Is that right, Ms. Angela?
Yes, that's correct.
So just the survey just wasn't quite correct. We didn't have one on file. Some of the boundaries just didn't meet up with what the city had on file with their city plat. I have our, as you can see in the pictures, I've started construction on lots one through five. Three homes are already framed. About to actually do a one-stop inspection, so we'll be sheet rocking hopefully end of next week. And obviously, just the, the goal here is just to bring some nicer homes into the west Longview area for pine tree. So we just have three more lots. I believe that that zoning didn't get changed in.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I see none. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in I see no one. Does anyone like to speak in opposition? Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? So I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Does pass. Okay, we are now to item F of the public hearing. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-22-23 filed by Oakland Heights Baptist Church requesting a rezone from office to general retail zoning district for a portion of lots one, two, three, and nine, Block Four, Lagay Gardens located at 1607 Judson Road. Angela?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of Oakland Heights Baptist Church, so this portion is on. Success management is followed. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the surrounding uses to the north, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any commissioners having any questions of Angela? Okay, is the applicant present or representative? If you are, please come forward. State your name.
My name is Michael Cook. I represent Oakland Heights Baptist Church. Appreciate the commissioners and Ms. Troy and her staff hearing our request and application. Our church family will be relocating on George Ritchie Road near Airline on 20 acres that we purchased there, and we would like to have both sides of the street. I know we're just discussing one of those at this time, to move into one zoning where we don't have multiple zoning issues in general retail. As many of you are aware, five to 10 acre tracts are very rare in a fully developed downtown center of Longview. We feel like that certainly a five acre plus tract does not fit for office. There's tremendous development potential. It's very strong, and we also feel like with the revitalization of Judson Road a little further up from us, with a house that was just removed and some multi-housing that's going in there, that it would be consistent potentially for redevelopment. We also believe that it would do nothing but increase property values in that area. When you have a multimillion dollar property, it's unlikely that, that anyone that would purchase that would put anything less than top-notch there. We also believe this will, for our church family, leave the door wide open for another church to purchase the facility, if that might work out as well. We do not believe that this is spot zoning, as Mrs. Troy just mentioned, and we do not believe this is a very unusual request in terms of its nature. Our church family desires to be good neighbors, and we have, we feel like, for 65 years at the corner of Eden Drive and Judson Road. Recently, one of our real estate committee members, Mr. Roy Metzger, who's present tonight, met and answered questions with the Tealwood Neighborhood Association. There were no reservation voiced at that meeting. We believe that, I believe that the president of the Tealwood Homeowners Association is here tonight. We've also spoken with one of the residents from the Ramblewood Street, which is even further from our campus, about some concerns that they had as well. So I'll answer any questions that you may have of me.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mike?
Hi, Mike.
So is it, it's a sale, it's not a rent? You're not going to rent it out, you're going to sell it, right?
No, ma'am. We're not going to be renting the property.
Does East Texas Dance Company know you're selling?
Yes. They just don't have several million dollars.
Any other questions? Mike, stand by, because we'll probably have some questions come up here in a minute. Okay, I'm going to, well, before I open the public hearing, Angela, tell us what general retail zoning is, please.
Okay, so general retail, kind of like what the name implies. It is a retail-type zoning category. A lot of retail-type uses. You could do an antique store. You could do a drive-through restaurant, a quick-service restaurant. You could have a sit-down restaurant that serves alcohol. They would need to get a specific use permit. You could do a pharmacy. You could do, you could do a grocery store. You could do a hotel. There are quite a few uses that are allowed in general retail, but they're, your typical retail-type uses that are allowed in there.
Okay. Okay, I'm now going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to support this request, please come forward. State your name.
My name's Roy Metzger. I'm on the advisory committee for Oakland Heights Church, and I'm also a resident of Tealwood, 317 Tealwood Drive, and I'm in support of it because And I'm in support of it because it, it's a good use. It has connectivity to other office facilities as well as general retail, and its grandfathered use has resulted in the growth of the church, and regrettably, it's moved to north of town. But I think it'll be a good use, and the money will be used to support the church. And also, I thought it was a great benefit because the, the property is currently not producing any tax income for the county or for the city. And as a former tax assessor in Oregon, I, I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
My understanding is that the church has voted to make this move, correct?
That's what I understand, yeah. I wasn't here when they made that vote.
Okay.
I'm a new resident. My daughter lives here. And my wife told me I needed to move, so.
Okay. Very good. All right. Anyone have any questions? All right. Is there any opposition to the request? If so, please come to the podium. State your name and address. I have a couple of cards here.
Well, I didn't fill out a card yet. My name is Carla Hale. I'm the president of the Tillwood HOA. And just to clarify, we did bring that up in discussion at our last meeting. Was really brief. No one really had any information other than, they were trying to sell. We don't have a problem with that. We're just concerned as to what type of business would go in, because on Eden and on Hoyt, but Eden's the more pass-through street to Fourth Street and on to Eastman Road, it is just a two-lane road. So we're concerned about the traffic that's already pretty bad there, high traffic going to work and getting off work type stuff. So we do have some concerns as to what would go in there. We're, we're all for equality and everything, but we want to make sure it's a good business that will not take the, the neighborhood value down, because being near retail isn't always good for your home value. So, that's all I have to say.
One, one question real quick while you're here. Are y'all more concerned about where the actual church is or where the family lives?
That's really for both. It's really for the church, more for the church, I guess.
Okay.
It, because that's really more where Eden Drive is.
That's kind of what I figured, so.
Yeah. I've been, I was a realtor for like 20 years, and generally, when you're around retail, retail issues, your housing value does diminish somewhat.
Is there any other opposition to this request? If so, please come forward. State your name. Hearing done. Any additional questions or comments? If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have several seconds.
I see.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Does pass. Item number G. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z two-two dash two-four, filed by Oakland Heights Baptist Church requesting a rezone from office and single-family to general retail zoning district for approximately 3.23 acres of abstract 113 Jay Jackson survey tract 55, section three, and lots one and two, block one, Glen Haven addition, located at 1600 Judson Road. Angela?
Thank you. As, as you stated, the applicant is requesting a rezone from office and single-family to, to general retail zoning district located at 1600 Judson Road. So we are talking about the east side of Judson Road. And as stated in my previous staff report, places of worship are permitted in any zoning district by right. However, the applicant does plan to build a new facility, and so they're trying to market this property. Although there is general retail along this corridor, the future land use map does support office and low-density residential at this location. Judson Road is a texted and maintained facility and is a principal arterial roadway, so it does support general retail type uses as well as office type uses. Staff does find the proposed zoning change, it is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Angela?
So Angela, say the property sells, and somebody wants to put apartment complex up.
Mm-hmm.
Is that possible?
It is.
Good.
Apartments are allowed in general retail.
Yes.
Do y'all do any kind of traffic study or anything on the front end?
So it, it would depend, it would depend on what type of development it is, whether or not our traffic engineering division would require a, a traffic impact analysis.
And it looks like some of these, you know, some of this butts up right against some single-family residences. I mean, the, the one on the west side, it kind of, kind of fed in, you know, real, real well, but the back end of this property is, is really up against some properties.
That, yes, that is correct.
There's both single and, and multi, right there.
Yeah.
And do we, on general retail, what is the buffer?
Uh, it's a minimum 10 feet, and then depending on if they go multi-story, it would be an additional five feet for every story. But it is a minimum 10-foot with a six-foot solid wooden fence.
Does the applicant have anything to add? If so, please come forward. He says he has none. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the request? Seeing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Go ahead.
My name is Kendall Land. I live at 13 Ramblewood Drive. I'm a pastor here in town at First Presbyterian. I've been here about eight years. Before I get started, if I may, the residents of Tillwood and Ramblewood that are here that are not in favor, would y'all please raise your hands so the commission can see you? Thank you. And we also have four of our residents in Ramblewood who spoke to me today who are unable to come for health and work reasons. To begin with, I was, I believe, that neighbor who spoke with the pastor, I think, and I reached out to him for that conversation. And what needs to be clarified is that I told him very clearly, I was not in favor of this rezoning request. Angela's been very helpful with helping me understand all the rezoning codes, because I'm way out of my water here. But if you would, could you go back, please, to the first, if you, let's a great place to start? So on the original request, I think that was submitted, one of the reasons for wanting to get the rezone was so that would be more consistent with the properties that is around it. Yes, not spot zoning, but if you look, general retail is the minority, an extreme minority of the properties around this residential area that you see on that map. And then on to the next map that Angela showed you as well. This is from the comprehensive plan that talks about having the buffer zone of office space near residential areas. And if that were to become general retail, that buffer zone that was recommended in the future use plan of the comprehensive plan goes away. And primarily, the biggest concern that we have is, we don't know what's going in this place. General retail, again, as Angela pointed out, it's pretty all-encompassing. It's the least restrictive of all the zoning measures. So it could be the most wonderful thing that Longview has ever seen that goes into that place, that makes all of our houses and our living escalate through the roof. Chances are, that's not going to happen, because we have no idea what might go in there. And it would be wonderful, I agree, if another church were to go in there, but we don't have to rezone anything for another church to go in there. So I hope that the commission will not grant this rezoning request, and that it will keep it the residential zone that it is now, because even though you can't see Ramblewood on this map, if you're not familiar with the area, that road right there, Leisure Lane, is the only entrance and exit into our neighborhood. And so every day, whether we wanted to or not, we would be confronted with whatever goes into that space. We would have no other choice but to deal with it every day. And so I hope that the commission will not approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak against it? Please, come forward. State your name and your address.
My name is Doreen Kepke, and I live--
Uh, get closer to the mic, please.
Okay, I'm short.
Oh, pull it down. There you go.
My name is Doreen Kepke. I did not fill out a card. I live at five Ramblewood Drive, and my entrance in and out of my home is Leisure Lane. And if you'll put that other map back up, I want you to be aware that, that creek or drainage ditch, whatever you want to call it, is part of that property. Do you see where I'm talking about? Can you see it? Okay. I just want you to be aware, because there's a lot on one side that's vacant of the creek, and I guess it belongs to the church. And then all of this property's going to be rezoned. What's going to happen to whatever is going to drain into that ditch that's going down the road? Thank you. We don't want it.
Thank you.
One more, one more thought.
Wait, wait till you get the mic, please.
One more thought. Carla Hale, again, at, out of Tillwood. Tillwood also is, that Leisure Lane is the only access we have where, into our neighborhood also. But my only thought, when you mentioned about other properties or the entities that could go into those, you mentioned apartment complexes. We have enough. We don't need any more apartment complexes on Eden at that end. We got enough there. Even though these would be new ones that we'd go in, or they're going to remodel the church to be an apartment complex, the two that we have are declining. One is, has been in really bad shape, and I understand it's been recently bought and it's being redone, but we don't need any more multifamily issues going on. There's not enough, the roads is just not going to take it. It is difficult in the mornings to get out on Eden at times, but.
I have a question for you, because I'm going to want to mention if it was available to put apartment complex there, but general retail. So what would you rather see there? General retail, apartment complex, or do you just not want the church to sell?
No, no. I'm not, it is not my thought to deny someone the ability to sell their property. I understand they're moving to a new location. I've known lots of churches that have done that. We just are concerned as to what type of retail will go in there. We want it to be a good retail if it does. We're not, where bad elements might come in and walk the streets, because we do have some of that already. We're not, our, our neighborhood is not really opposed to, to it. We understand that's just the way of the world. Changes happen every day, but we're just concerned especially about another apartment complex. But we just want it to be a good business that would go in there, that would be vital, but we are concerned about the traffic. Because I understand there's been a big wreck there at Eden and Judson right now, so.
Is your, is your concern more the depth down Eden to where Leisure? I mean, if, if there was something that was more front-facing on Judson, you know, kind of where that is?
Well, that would make, that would make better sense not to involve some more traffic coming in and out of that. And it's really, it's that vacant lot there that's, as I understand, you can't build on it anyway. Is that--
And the floodplain?
Because it's a floodplain?
There is some floodplain there.
So, I mean, most people are not going to build on a floodplain, you know? So that would help that issue, but still, depending on what traffics, issues come out of the new owners or buildings there, I don't see the city enlarging Eden Drive or we hope not. I mean, you know, it's a major undertaking financially, plus the time it would take to do that, so. Just, we're more concerned about the apartment complex that you mentioned. We would prefer not another one at that location, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I won't ask any more questions.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak in opposition? Any other questions or comments?
Angela, can you recap? What it's zoned now and what can go there now? So everyone hears it.
Yes. So currently, the property is zoned office and single-family too. So a church is allowed by right in any zoning district. So churches or schools, so a school could go there, and they are allowed by right in any zoning district. But other than that, you know--
These you'll get for it, and, and we were talking about to the west, that, that portion earlier. But if, if that applies to what you're, to the church itself, just looking at what's going for what in the city of Longview, 3.23 acres, it's not going to be several million dollars. And I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, well, who could afford to do that? I mean, I think the, the win-win for everyone would be if another church went there. That would be great. Then everyone's happy. If not, I couldn't imagine getting several million dollars for lots to build single-family residents on. It just, the numbers don't jive. You just couldn't make any money off of it, but no builder would touch that. And then office space, I mean, I don't know. Like I said, I'm just thinking out loud, and I see, and hear both sides of it, you know? It'd be difficult to sell it. I would be concerned if I lived there. I, I would definitely be concerned. But I'm also, you know, I don't want to go against God either. That was--
Humor. The jug at them.
So for the church, I mean, it's kind of a, kind of a rock and hard place from my perspective. I don't know. It's one of those tough ones where you don't want anyone to be hurt by it, you know? I don't know.
But we've also seen a lot of sales that, you know, a, a future purchaser was buying a property with a specific use in mind, and the sale, or the purchase of the property was subject to rezoning, and that allowed everyone to see more what would be there as well. I do have one question of the applicant. On the, on Hoyt Drive, it also says those three lots are owned by Oakland Heights Baptist Church, and it looks like from the, and I apologize, I didn't drop Hoyt, but it looks like from the aerial that there were either single-family on those. Are those truly owned by the church? And those would continue to stay single-family or multifamily or whatever they are?
I believe so. I mean, I think the pastor could answer that, but they did not request that those three lots be rezoned, but the church does own them.
On, on the three lots, we have a buyer for those, and that will stay as single-family residences.
Okay.
There's a creek behind us, and Ms. Troy has talked to us about that portion potentially being deeded over to the city. That really is not probably going to be in the plans for any developer. And Mr. Jones, I would disagree with Frank Chaney, who's the leading commercial realtor in East Texas, has told us that the market value would be much different than you're suggesting. But you may be a realtor, I don't--
Now, for the 3.23 acres?
That is correct. Actually, for the entire five point-something acres.
What's the, what's the other, across the street?
Yes.
Are y'all going to try to sell them together?
They are being marketed together, that's correct. And I apologize, I didn't know we were having a hand vote for numbers. We could have brought several hundred people tonight, but we didn't know that that was kind of what this was based upon, so I apologize. I think we could have had a pretty significant showing.
My concern really is, is like everybody's talked about, is just how deep down Eden the property goes. And I understand what you're saying as far as some of that floodplain.
Well, but, I mean, I mean, the creek alone is going to be a, much larger than a 10-foot. The city of Longview maintains that, and that's a massive barrier in itself. And obviously, any development's going to be facing Judson Road. That's where the value is toward Judson Road. So again, we are doing what our real estate people has asked us to do, and, man, I'm just here taking the bullets.
Angela, on that, you know, where it is saying floodplain, under the, the rules, nothing can be built in the floodplain?
Um, so it would depend if it was floodplain or floodway. So nothing can be built in the floodway. In the floodplain, you can build as long as it's, I believe, two feet above the finished floor elevation.
Improvements can be done, elevation certificates and flood studies and things.
Any other questions?
Or comment? I think the price point that it's at is going to knock out a lot of people that some people think might be riffraff going in there. to knock out a lot of people that some people think might be riffraff going in there. Because I think the price that you had stated is roughly what it's going to be, because it's commercial property on Judson. With single-family, I don't, I don't see a developer knocking all that stuff down to do single families, because it would be pretty pricey, but other things I would see.
And again, our church family's position is, we want to be good neighbors. We wouldn't, would not want to sell to somebody that's going to hurt anyone in our neighborhoods. We're here to serve the people of Longview. And we, but we can't control necessarily what a developer puts in. But the City of Longview has guidelines and regulations as to what can go in and cannot. So, once we sell that, we would no longer have that type of control of the property. It's just in the best interest of our church to have it zoned retail, and that's what our request is.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Anyone else going to speak in opposition? Yes, sir? You may come back.
Can I also come back?
You want to stay?
Until I close the public hearing, you can all speak.
I think the property thing that's come up, that is the most concern for us as the people who live in that area, is, is exactly what was mentioned earlier. We don't know what's going in, and I, I know it's not uncommon for someone to have a sale lined up, for the buyer then to come in and make that request of the rezone. I would love to trust that the church will do what's in best interest for their neighbors. I've worked in churches for over 20 years. Churches want to do that all the time. We do not always do that. Sometimes we do what's best for us. And so, I would encourage you to consider that if someone is a serious buyer, they understand how this process works. If they are going to, if they're used to plopping down $3 million for a piece of property, they know how planning and zoning works. They will come to you and they will make that request. And that will be a good neighbor to have. But we don't know that going into it. So, that was something I would urge you to consider in your time. Because that is the biggest concern that I've heard from our neighbors in Ramblewood. We just don't know what's coming in. If we did know what was coming in, we would feel a lot more comfortable about it. And that would be the biggest thing for the concerns of the, of the neighborhood, I think.
Any other comments or questions? Pastor, do you want to come back, or?
No, sir, I'll leave it in the Lord's hands.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is David Orbin, and I am a resident on Ramblewood, 7 Ramblewood. And as has adequately been presented, I would be concerned primarily about the, the traffic on Eden. How that would affect the residential area. Would there be, if it's sold as a for retail, would there be entrances and exits? Could that be controlled in any way? I appreciate the church's predicament, but maybe you got the cart before the horse. In, before purchasing and moving, you probably should have sold the property and had the money in hand to do that, would be my, would be my thought. I'm a retired pastor. I've dealt with this in the past as well. Either that or tell your congregation tithing has just gone up to 20%.
Any other comments or questions?
So, so as a reminder, this is not a be-all, end-all. The, the, a proposed buyer or, or can come back and revisit this again? Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. If, if you choose to not take action on it, and, and, you know, there's a couple of different ways. I was just thinking, you know, based on the comments that were made, an alternative action, not what they've proposed, but based on kind of a compromise, if you will, would be to, you know, not rezone the area that's that lot in the creek, leave it as single-family. And then the area that is single-family too, that's the current church, the commission can recommend a lesser zoning and could recommend to rezone that to office so that it would all be consistent, and it could be sold and done something with other than a church. If there is some reservation about the retail there, that would still allow them to have a recommendation for something there. If that's, if that were an option of, that would be an option for the commission.
Me personally, I'd be more inclined to do that than to, I mean, I, I always try to put myself in both, both sides shoes, whatever. If I lived in Leisure Lane, how would I feel about this off of Eden? Now we're hearing about the driveways more, more than likely going onto Eden. And then, you know, I see the church's stance too. They're wanting to be able to, to promote this property advantageously, of course, for the future. But I just, yeah. I'm, I'm pro-building and everything, pro-construction and sale and all that. But at the same token, these homeowners, you know, I wouldn't be too happy either.
Yeah, that, that would do kind of that alternative-
That's why I asked, if this is a be-all, end-all, if, okay, then it's done and we're, and we're not going to revisit again. I would much rather see a proposed buyer come in and go, okay, we have the kind of money to visit with the homeowners and go, here's what we're proposing. We want to get it changed, you know, and, and go with that. I think that's the lesser of the evils.
From my, my comments, you can probably tell, I, I kind of feel the same way, and we've seen that before. And, you know, it, once you have a plan in place, it usually works out. And I'm, I'm definitely like you. I'm for building, I'm for progress. I want to see the church succeed where it's going, and I want to see this, this property developed. You know, and I, and I don't like folks that just don't want to see anything developed there, or, you know, something like that. And, and I don't think that's the case. I think we have some legitimate concerns on traffic and where entrances would be, and how far down this, this zoning would be stretching. And I, you know, I, I feel like anybody that's going to be a buyer, you know, would have an idea of what they're going to do and could re-approach us, and, you know, hopefully, they would work it out with, you know, have some meetings with the, with the residents. And, you know, if it's a viable proposal, and, you know, it's not really going to, you know, cause a lot of traffic issues, would, I wouldn't look too kindly on the residents, you know, just stopping any progress, but I don't think that's the case here. You know, I think, I think we could look at it when that occurs, and we'd be very open to rezoning that everybody's comfortable with.
It could be a contingency purchase, you know?
Yeah, and I would just comment. I like Michael's idea. I believe that may satisfy both parties. If, if, if we go ahead and move it to, to, to business or office, does that represent to a potential buyer that, you know, there is movement on the deal and, you know, things can get done to help, you know, satisfy, you know, an idea? So, I don't know if we just table it, or if you have, or if we can do what Michael said-
Any other thoughts on that?
Our real estate representation is in South Carolina and could not be here tonight. It is my understanding that before anyone could build, they must get and go through the application process with the City of Longview. Traffic studies, site plans have all got to be approved. So, for us to be able to market the church, it being general retail now, it will still go through that screening process, but for it can be permitted. So, that would all be taken care of in that phase. And again, prolonging that, and it hurts us when we market the church for people to say, well, that's not general retail. So, we close a lot of lookers, potential buyers, by not having that rezoned. So, would, would that be our, would that be our desire? Absolutely not. But no one's mentioned that this has to go through stringent permitting. And so, if there's traffic studies, issues with egress, all those things can be worked out in the permitting phase. We're talking about here zoning for what potential purchasers can and cannot do. And so, that would be our request, based upon Ms. Choi's recommendation, that the commissioners approve this request, as Oakland Heights Baptist Church has asked of you.
I didn't make a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, again, I think it's, it's worth, worth mentioning, I think anyone that's going to have that kind of money for that, I mean, it's a great location. It's great land.
Right, but what does that have to do with the rezoning?
Can I finish, can I finish this?
You're talking about the value, but what does that have to do with the rezoning? I don't understand.
Let me, let me finish, maybe you will. Maybe you will understand, pastor. What's the worst of two evils here? Us, us doing this and, and putting the homeowners at risk? Or you maybe not being able to market the property the way you want to? Anyone with that kind of money, I mean, it's, it's, it's either going to be one of two things, in my opinion. I don't know, I may be totally wrong. You're either going to have another church go in there, or you're going to have someone, a big company, a corporation that's going to come in and has the big money. Those, these little things don't faze them. They're going to look at this and go, okay, that's just a matter, before we purchase it, we're going to put a contingent offer in. We're going to say, we're going to give you 4 million, whatever the number is that you've got in your mind. We'll, we'll give you 4 million, but it's based on us being able to get it approved. Then they're going to come back, just like you've done, and we're going to hash it out, and the neighbors are either going to be upset, and we revisit this again, or they're going to say, we think that's a great organization, they've been good neighbors in the past, around the country, to different neighborhoods where they've gone in, whatever. I just think that it's, in my opinion, somebody can hone in if you want. I think it's, the, 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 the worst of two evils is putting the neighborhood at risk of once it's rezoned, it opens it up to a lot more things that can go in there. I don't think it's going to hurt your marketing, honestly, for that property. So, that's just my opinion.
When you, when you say it's putting them at risk, exactly what is it, what, what's risking?
Can you name again? Can we address that again? What types of business can go in there?
Yes, so grocery stores, your typical retail apartments, like Mr. O'Rear had said. So, what else did I say? You could do restaurants, like quick service, fast food restaurants. You could do sit-down, uh, sit-down restaurants that can serve alcohol, but they do need to come back for a specific use permit. A lot of retail-type uses, I think I said a grocery store, a hotel. Yeah.
So, okay, so use either of those examples. Say a grocery store goes in there, the amount of traffic that's going to be on that two-lane road on Eden, that would be a little bit overwhelming.
But how would that be approved if the traffic study? I mean, they would never get permitted if the traffic would not be approved by the City of Longview.
So, depending on the type of use, not everything requires a traffic impact analysis, or what you're saying, a traffic study. So, it just depends on the type of use and the intensity, whether it would require a traffic impact analysis by our traffic engineering department.
So, so, okay, Michael, your opinion, I want to build an apartment complex there with three inter-units. What's feasibility of that? It's, it's-
Yeah, I mean, from a, from a land use standpoint, I mean, if they can fit it on there, now, when you start looking at traffic impact, and that's one of the key differences between office and general retail, is the traffic generation. Office is going to generate less traffic. That's why you see offices transitional. General retail is meant for those areas that can handle traffic. As Angela stated before, Judson Road is a, a major arterial that can handle that, but can the side roads that are, that are going to, that accept some of that. So, that's when we, when we look at impact and intensity and density, all of that factors into office is, is less intense than the general retail. And so, yes, as stated, staff is going to review that. If, if you were to rezone it to general retail, we're going to review that. But we're not going to have an opportunity to say no outside of floodplain issues, some minor parking calculations, landscaping calculations, as long as they meet all the administrative rules, they'd be able to build. We're not going to be able to screen it for uses. And I think the uses are the, are the things that were voiced as concerns.
So, we already have two places to come out on text dot approved on the campus. So, it's unlikely they're going to take those away.
As, as it sits grandfathered. But I think what we're hearing is that there's a thought that somebody would purchase the property and tear it down. It's kind of the feeling I'm getting. And so, that would be a blank slate. We would look at everything as new. So, all the existing driveways, curb cuts on all the roads would be kind of washed out with that, and we would look at it needing to be compliant with all of our, our regulations.
Any other comments or questions? Mike, you have any other comments?
I think if the, if the council will not, or the commissioners will not adopt it as the request is made, we're probably going to withdraw the request. I don't think the church would be interested at this point in anything other than general retail.
Marketing is one property, both sides?
Yes.
East and west?
Yes.
Would the church consider breaking it up?
That would certainly not be our preference.
It could still be marketed that way pursuant to, like what they could say on LoopNet or Coldwell Banker, that it has the option to change, so.
Anything can be marketed. I would just yield to a man that's an expert in that area, who says this needs to be done. So, I'm just bringing that application.
Gotcha.
Any additional comments or questions? I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, and I'm going to entertain a motion. And please make a motion of some type, so we- So move. Motion to approve? You have a motion to approve here?
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. No. We need a, and, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Split.
Draws, draws.
So, you got the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, thank you all for, for that, and all of the comments that were made for this. So, it really did not pass, and it really did not fail, correct?
It does not go with a recommendation for approval from PNC.
That's correct.
They can go to city council and get it approved, or so they know?
They could.
It'll go to the city council, and they'll, they'll state what our recommendation is, or wasn't. Okay, I'm going to move to regular agenda item H. Is that what we're to, I think?
That is correct.
A public hearing will be held to consider application Z22-25, followed by Jess White requesting a rezone from multifamily MF3 to single-family SF1 zoning district for approximately 5.017 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain Survey Track 601, Section 9, situated on the north side of Spring Hill Road and west of McCann Road. Angela?
Thank you. So, the applicant is requesting to rezone from multifamily scene here in the pink to single-family 1, located on the north side of Spring Hill Road. The property in 2008, what is apparently originally rezoned from ag to multifamily 3. However, the current owner is requesting to rezone to single-family in order to build a single-family home on this property. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, the commissioners?
What does the GR stand for with the properties next to that?
Uh, general retail.
General retail.
Mm-hmm.
You can't build a single-family in multifamily zone?
No, you cannot.
Any other questions, Angela? Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward, state your name?
Hello, my name is Jess White, and I'm the owner of this property. It is currently zoned, like they said, multifamily. And as you can see, the majority of it is in a flood zone, which would make building multifamily a little bit difficult. Multifamily also doesn't really fit the area. This is mainly A-plus houses. And I don't think multifamily would be very fitting for this area. It's also just for me- It's also just for me and my family, we want to build a house on it, and it's five acres. There's also a right-of-way that goes through. It splits it right in the middle, it's a major electrical right-of-way. And so, we're going to build a house on the non-floodplain area for our family to live in, so that's the request.
So, your plans are to build a private residence for yourself?
That is correct.
Okay. You have any questions of either the staff or the applicant? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience in support of this? If so, please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
My name is Randall Pearson. I'm a private citizen residing at 4021, but he's trailed directly across from this request. And we would see it as positive. It appears to be more in keeping with the surrounding area, and we would feel it'd be positive for reasons of noise, traffic, and just general value of property in this area, so we would request approval.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you. Anyone like to speak in opposition? I see none. Any further questions? I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, Angela, if you can give us an update for city council action on previous zoning?
Thank you. All items that were presented to city council were approved, including two annexations, which y'all didn't hear, because it has to go before city council, but there were two annexations that were presented to city council, one on Smelly Road, and then one in our South Business Park along Eastman Road off of Neiman Marcus Parkway, and both of those were approved by city council.
Okay. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at this point. Thank you all.
Thank you.